Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to take the pledge. Or, excuse me, take the... What am I asking for?
Attendance.
Attendance, yes, thank you.
Mike Bruno, here. Tara Burkhart, here. Don Commies out. Becky Ruby?
Here.
Ian Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jean McGowan is out. Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Robert Swanson?
Here.
We begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask someone very special, someone who works hard, someone who we respect, and someone who just celebrated a birthday yesterday, Officer Bogenheimer, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegi...[53.28][53.28](laughter)[54.28][54.28](pause)
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer. Our first order of business tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is item 3A. It's a presentation called "A Primer in Public Pensions," and the presentation is being made by our finance manager, Rita Cruz. Rita, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good evening. Welcome to the Primer in Public Pensions. Tonight's discussion is just going to be a high overview about the three pension systems that the City of Geneva pays into: the police pension, the fire pension, or firefighter's pension, if you want to call it by its long term, and IMRF. First, I want to talk about pension authority, the reason why we pay the pensions. Illinois State statute requires us to pay the pensions based upon these four statutes listed below. Police pension is typically called Article III, because you see that 3 in the middle of the ILCS reference. Firefighters is typically called Article IV, for that same reason, and IMRF also has its own pension authority. For police pension, the employees that are in that pension are all sworn officers. For firefighters, you have all your sworn firefighters, but does not include POCs. And for IMRF, you have all the non-sworn positions that are full-time, other than or anyone that works over 1,000 hours per year. And this statute dates back far, far before most of us, in 1963. So first...[174.56][174.56](laughter)
Should we show hands?
Okay, sorry.[178.29][178.29](laughter) Okay. So, next, I'd like to talk about the public safety pensions, police and firefighters. I'm talking about these together because they are very similar in their funding policies and how they operate. So, when you look at the pension boards, each of the pensions have their own separate boards. So, for the police pension, you have five pension trustees. They each have two-year terms, and they are alternating, excuse me. You have two elected active positions, which would be two people or two trustees on the pension board that are voted upon by the active people paying the pension, so pretty much anyone, you know, a police officer, or a police officer, a sergeant, those type of positions, that they have to currently be paying into the fund. So, currently, we have Carbury and Yates on those two positions. We have one elected retiree, which is voted upon by the retiree group that is retired from that pension fund as well. So, for police, you have Burton. You have one ex officio, which is the city treasurer, and then you have one merril pointy, which is myself. So, for the firefighter pension, we have the exact same makeup, except instead of looking at a two-year term, you have a three-year term. So, you have a fronty and los as your two actives. You have the retiree, which I forgot to put in there, which would be Steve Olson, a current retiree. You have the city treasurer, and then you have myself again. Once again, all of this board makeup and composition is based upon state statute. Next, I was going to go over some of the pension responsibilities. This is the full list. I will go through some of them in detail in later slides, but I'll start up with the higher level. Investing in pension fund assets, I'll talk about that in the next slide. Also dispersing pension fund assets, I'll talk about a little bit later. The adjudication of disability retirement survivorship claims. This is, there is a statutory process that has to be gone through for anyone that is applying for disability retirement or survivorship claims, just to go through the pension board. So, there's a process which has to be gone through, depending on which type it is, that's based upon the Illinois State statute. Collection of retirement contributions and property tax levies, I'll go through a little more detail later. Conducting trustee elections. As I stated earlier, that the actives and retirees do their own elections. They do what's called a canvas ballot box method, which means that the whole group, so let's say, the most recent one we had was for a firefighter. They list out the list of every single active firefighter that's currently paying into the pension. They have one day, 8 until 4. They just check the box, whichever pension person, whichever person they want to represent themselves into the pension, put in a box. After that, the pension board opens up the boxes and counts the ballots. So, there's really no, it is, you know, you don't have to be chosen to go into that. If you have more than one vote, maybe, or maybe two or three, you're in. So, really, there's no political or anything else like that with it. You just, you get chosen, pretty much. Hiring necessary experts, that would be, for example, hiring the investment advisors, which each fund has, the accounting services, and also lawyers, if need be. There is some rulemaking authority to the pension board, not a lot, pretty much just kind of simple things like Open Meetings Information, or Open Meetings Act, which is brought over from what we do here, and things like reimbursements and items like that. The last part is continuing education. Everyone on the board has continuing education requirements. So, if you were on the board, if you're a trustee on the board, after April 3, 2008, you're required to do eight hours of continuing education on an annual basis. Later on, in August of 2009, they changed it, and they actually said that you have to have 32 hours of certified new trustee training, which is literally a four-day class, Monday through Thursday, learning all about the pension fund, how it works, different people coming in and talking to you, or you can do that online, and then 16 hours of continuing education on an annual basis. So, the people that are on this board, they do understand their responsibilities because we do have to constantly go through training, like other professionals. Investing in the pension assets. So, there's an investment mix that the pension boards can choose. Depending on how, the dollar amount of assets you have in the pension fund depends upon what state statute that applies to you. So, both of our funds are over $10 million. So, we have the highest level of kind of range of what we can actually do. So, not over 65%, the pension fund can invest in U.S. stocks, mutual funds, domestic and international, variable annuities, which I'll say now, the pension funds do invest in those, and no more than 5% of the fund can be invested in a single corporation. The remainder, 35%, can be invested in bonds, cash, and cash equivalents. The policy language for those funds, for each of those funds can be in their respective pension fund documents, which are on the city's website, because it is a very long list of what they can and cannot invest in. I wanted to give you a high-level overview. Dispersing the pension fund assets. Both pensions use Lauterbach and Amen for their accounting services. They distribute a monthly financial report to the respective boards, which pretty much shows them where their balance sheet, their income statement, just as much, just like you see here as the city, at a whole level and a monthly basis, from me. They disperse the monthly pension checks. They print and report, they're printing and reporting of 1099Rs, which is the retirement income annual basis, like the W-2s, and they do account for the employer-employee contributions as well. The pension board is also required to look at the collection and required contributions of property tax levy. So, the pension board is required to review the contributions from the employee and the employer. And they just really look at that on a monthly basis, as we talked about earlier, with the financials. But, if the contributions are not being made by the city, there's a public act, which allows the state comptroller to intercept the funds that are due to the city and deposit those funds into the underfunded pension fund. So, for example, if I fail to transfer money into that fund, or we fail to levy that amount that is required by the minimum requirement by state statute, the comptroller can take, let's say, the city's, which the city would typically get the sales tax and the income tax, they could take that away from the city and divert it straight into the pension fund. That is new, that's only been about under a year right now, that they've been allowed to do that, but they do have the ability to do it if need be. So, next, I want to talk about the actuarial evaluation. The actuarial evaluation, a basic definition is a statement of the status of the pension fund at one specific point in time, because it is one day. It's always, for police and fire, it's April 30 of every single year, one day only. It is required by state statute, once again. It's completed by an enrolled actuarial. The report is actually for the future, based upon prior year. So, for example, the report that you saw in October was dated as of April 30, 2017, but the future dates are May 1, '17 through April 30 of '18, because that actuarial report is giving you the amount of levy for your next fiscal year. So, that's why it is dated that way, and it must be completed on an annual basis. In that actuarial evaluation, there are things that we can control and we can't control. Some of the items we cannot control would be the date of the valuation. As I said, we have, for police and fire, it's April 30, it is the end of our fiscal year. The market and volatility in the prices. One example, I'd come up with this, would be about two weeks ago, the market lost 4.5%, you know, within one day. Well, could you imagine if your pension valuation was the day that it lost the 4.5%, not the day before? That could make dramatic different results, and that's only one day. And maybe by now, you're making it back, but as I said before, it is a snapshot in a point in time. Another part of that volatility would be, for example, if you looked at April 30 of 2016, the city, both pension funds for the city saw about a 3% loss. Well, if you look at Dorth Rora, or Cohort to the South, they have a May 30 year-end, and they saw 0% increase. So, even that one month, if you take the pension valuation out of that month, that could even change, change it by 3%. It all depends on the market and the prices. The other thing is, is the entry-age normal cost, which is required by state statute, you cannot change. What that is, is that's the way, that it creates a level contribution throughout the career of the employee. So, it makes assumptions of certain increases, but actually makes you pay more at the beginning of a career and pay less at the end, because really, you assume wages will go up, but your contributions are more level. The variables which can be controlled would be the demographics, would be the mortality and disability rates, the retirement rates, termination of employer rates, and the marriage percentages. Those are not ultimately, we cannot control them 100%, because there are certain guidelines we have to go by, but you can change them a tad bit. The economic assumptions, you can change the investment rate of return, which is currently 7.25%, the salary increases, inflationary assumptions, and payroll growth, which payroll growth could mean number of employees that you have in the system, and other things like that. Some of the pension law mandates that are required, which, once again, we are unable to change, would be the actuarial calculations must use the projected unit of credit method to determine the statutory minimum. Typically, we do an actuarial evaluation based upon the minimum, which is required by state statute, and then we use, we also see what the other valuations are and come up with whatever the least is, is what we pay, because that's the statutory minimum. Assets must be valued at a specific actuarial smoothing method. The reason that being is, as we saw, and as we'll see in the future, you know, your returns are not flat. You want to be able to smooth that and go back and look at a five-year history and average that out, because you don't, because if you don't do that, you would see the contributions go up and down as those returns are going up and down. You want to see a more level contribution. And next would be House Bill 5088, the Municipal Compliance Report. This report has been published since 2015, I'm sorry. This report was included in the agenda item for the property tax levy, which was on the agenda in December 18 of last year. This really is kind of a good summary report, and it's probably why the state legislatures wanted the municipalities to do it, but it really kind of covers everything that goes on within that actuarial report. So, some of the items in there are the asset values, the receipts to the pension fund, the next year's required levy amount, the net income from investments for the past two fiscal years, the number of active members, benefits dispersed, the funded ratio, the unfunded liability, and the investment policy. These are also now located on our website as well, on the transparency page on the city's website, but that is also a good resource. You don't see the full report, but it does give you the nuts and bolts of what that report actually says. So, that is a high-level overview of what the police and fire pension fund requirements are, and what we do, at least as a pension board. Next, we'll be talking about IMRF, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. This is completely different from what I just spoke of. IMRF has a Board of Directors for five-year terms. There are four elected by participating governments, so there's one vote per government, and there are about 3,000 governments within the fund. There are three positions elected by IMRF members, which would be someone like myself that's contributing to the fund, and I am not receiving, but I'm contributing to the pension fund. Then there's one position that's elected by an annuitant, or aka a retiree. The valuation is always dated December 31, 2000, or whichever year. That has not changed in the past, because they are on a calendar year, they're not willing to change that because of the valuation process they have to go through. So, we do some changes, things to make it look correct at 4/30, but that valuation is also going to stay the same. IMRF manages the investments. The city has no say in how they invest it. They do have a policy, obviously, once again, held by state statute, they can only invest in certain assets. IMRF distributes pension payments, just as the police and fire pension do, to all the retirees. They manage all of that for us. IMRF adjudicates a disability process as well, short-term care as well, or any kind of retirement process, and IMRF decides the actuarial assumptions as well. So, really, when you look at the city, on the end for IMRF, we get a percentage, that's what we have to pay them, and that's all we have to do with it. We really have no say at all of anything that they do. It just, pretty much, they give us a number, that's what we have to levy. So, to kind of look at comparisons, to compare the three pensions to each other. So, first off, would be comparing the police, or, sorry, yeah, the employee contributions. So, the police pension, they take in 9.91% of their salary. The fire pension does 9.455% of their salary, and IMRF is 4.5%. So, that's what an employee pays into the pension fund. Second would be the employer's contribution to the pension fund. So, it gets a little hairy. As of last week, when we did our projections for the budget, 41.6% is for the police pension fund. Now, that is calculated by taking the property tax levy, that's already been approved, the transfers that have already been made, into the pension fund, divided by all the wages for anyone that's within that fund. Now, the key is, the wages are salary, not salary plus overtime. So, it is a little bit smaller number. Same thing for fire, set the exact same way, 23.7%. When you take all of your pension, or all of your contributions, divided by your salary, that's what you get, you get 23.7%. Now, IMRF is a little different. It is salary plus overtime. It's 11.71%, which is just what we levied and what we have to pay on a biweekly basis. The number of participating employees, as of the end of the fiscal year, last year, we have 36 for police, 20 for fire, and 91 for IMRF. As I stated earlier, which I still want to put in a comparison sheet, would be, the valuation is April 30 for police and fire, and December 31 for IMRF. It was also asked to look at what the return is at the end of the fiscal, at the end of the year. So, calendar year 2017, which I missed that, didn't change it back, 2017 return, unaudited. IMRF just released their numbers today, or, sorry, Friday. So, the police pension's unaudited return is 15.94%. The fire pension's return was 12.94%. IMRF was 15.73%. So, that is as of December 31, 2017. The asset value, just to kind of compare the size of the three, you've got police at 20.3 as of 4/30, 2017. Fire, you've got 14.1 million, and then you've got the big one in the room, IMRF, which is 41 billion for every single of all those 3,000 participating employers into it. So, they are obviously the biggest one in the room. So, looking at some of the investment returns, just starting with police and fire pension, because they're on the same, they're on the same end of the year, so April 30. You see here where, you know, you see 2016 was a little bit lower, because, you know, that's when kind of the market was down a little bit, but as you see, '17, which we all know is comeback, hopefully, '18 will be much better, but on average, the eight-year return for police was 6.63%, and for fire, it was 5.8% for their returns. So, for IMRF, once again, we're on a calendar year, we're on a different basis as we are for fire and police. Their seven-year average, which I did not include the '17 number, because that is just an estimate right now, it's not an actual, these are all actuals, was 8.17%. So, next would be the contributions that the city made for the police pension fund. So, here you see, from 2007 to 2018, the contributions that the city has made to the pension fund. A few years there, council decided to short the contributions, because there were other needs within the city, so the contributions were not made, but you do see it reflected as well in the percentage increases to the pension fund. We see in 2014, there was a 58% increase. That was really paying catch-up, from going back from when the funds, when the contributions weren't being made. We were also required to make those payments at that time, so we had an audit back then, had to make the payments, and then the numbers shot up. So, that's why you do see that large increase at that point in time. Fire, pretty much the same story, other than 14 actually went down a little bit, but still you see 15. They really had to pick up the pace to keep all their contributions going and to make sure that it's being funded. IMRF, same story, just different numbers. Now that we pay, you know, now we currently pay all of our increases, and you see that really our percentage increases, actually for the past two years, actually decreased instead of went up, which was nice. We don't really have future numbers right now, but we at least see there is a trend of it going down. So, what does the future hold for the pension funds? And this is, this is a discussion for all three, right now, it's all three pension funds. So, in 2000, after January 1, 2011, they created a tier two, which basically required all new employees that came in to be in a separate tier system, which they were paying the same contribution amount, so you saw the 9%, 9%, and 4.5% on the prior slide, but they have reduced benefits, which then would really say that the employer is paying less into the pension fund. Now, taking that into consideration, you have this kind of interesting take of, well, what does that really do to the pension fund in the end? So, there have been numbers out there, and this, we're new into this, this is, we're only seven years in right now. Some people are saying there could be up to a 75% decrease in the normal cost per member. Now, what do you ask, what's the normal cost per member? The normal cost is just the cost to fund the benefit. So, you take the employer contributions, the employee contributions, and the investment earnings. So, there is a time where we will see these tier-one employees fall off, but that does take time, because you'd have to think about someone that started. My best example is, the youngest member of the sworn police pension fund, the sworn pension fund is 30 years, has an average life expectancy of 78. That person is not married. The pension fund would finally take that person, I guess you can say, off the books, bad to say, but by 2065. So, you're really talking about, it's going to take a long time to see those, to see the effect of that second tier come up. But the nice thing is, as we do see a tier-one retiring, you typically see a tier-two coming up and joining. That's always not the case. For example, I came from a different municipality. Because I did come from a different municipality, I am still tier-one. You'd not get the benefit of me being into tier-two. So, does, you know, you really, you don't always gain that more in IMRF than you do in police and fire, because there's not as many transfers, but you will see the effect of that second tier, which is wonderful. But when you look at increases in salaries, we really don't know what this is going to look like. But what else is on the front of pension? You have pension reform. So, IML has put out a public safety pension proposal. They have four options that they're trying to push down at Springfield. The first one is consolidate all of the current pensions into IMRF, but only from a certain date going forward. So, let's say any new sworn officer, it starts January 6 of 2018, let's say. They would now go in IMRF. It would look like IMRF, it would be an IMRF formula, where you'd only be paying a percentage in, not a levy, per se, like we do now for the police and fire pension. Second consolidation would be taking the police and fire, Article III and Article IV, putting them together into IMRF, but maintaining the characteristics of IMRF, or all the current characteristics of the funds, but under IMRF. So, take all the local control away from the boards, put it to IMRF. They'd obviously have a board or some kind of, let's call it PSIMRF, I don't know, something like that, and then they would, they would control everything. They'd control the investments, they would also control all of the other decisions that are made, like the disability. Third would be consolidate the investments only, so take the investments away from the local boards, bring it to IMRF, and have IMRF invest it for us, because obviously, they're investing $41 billion. And each, you know, our two funds are about 35,000, 35 million in total. They have the staff, they have the work to do that, so that is the third option. The fourth, which is A and B, would be to consolidate all the police pension funds into one, into a statewide pension fund, and basically eliminate everything that's at the individual board level. So, make an IMRF-like concept, but not call it IMRF, but it would all be consolidated together with all of, with basically losing all the boards. So, investments and all the other decision-making authority would become one group, and fire would be doing the exact same thing. So, you'd have almost three pensions fund, you'd have IMRF, police, fire, and it all pretty much looked the same. So, that's what IML is looking at right now, because they understand the stress that it's putting on all of the municipalities, especially budgetary, to try to fund the pensions, so they're looking to a way to consolidate, to try to kind of level it out and ease the pain a little bit. That is all I have for my presentation.
Thank you, Rita. Questions or comments from Ms. Cruz? Alderman, Rodecky?
Yeah, just a comment. I asked for the presentation, and I think you hit every point that I sent you a note earlier yesterday, so, thank you. It's really well done, very informative, and I think it's something, you know, it's a huge expenditure for us, it's a big liability to the city, and it's something that I think we need to have, you know, more knowledge is better, so, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
It should be noted as well that this presentation is already posted on the city's website?
It will be. No, tomorrow. It will be after morning.
Or will be, tomorrow, so. Alderman, Maladra.
Yes, so, one thing I'm curious about, when we hear that, you know, the state keeps enriching these pension benefits, particularly with public safety, what exactly does that mean?
They ultimately have control, as an unfunded mandate, too.
No, but how is a benefit enriched? They just offer the percentage of salary you get when you retire, and it keeps going up, or?
Yeah, I mean, they literally control everything. They control what we have to pay out to the pensioners. We are just the ones that have to pay that.
It could be, and it could be benefits as it relates to disability benefits, it could be benefits as to how many years they have to work before they get a certain percentage of benefits, anything that is considered a benefit, we don't have that control, it's through the state legislature.
Okay, thanks. You used the term "downstate." In essence, are you saying Chicago would not be a part of this, then?
Yes, so, basically, downstate pension funds are everything but Chicago.
Okay.
That's how it's termed in Illinois State statute.
I guess we had this discussion a little bit ago. Is it true that the pensions were not being funded? They were being funded with IOUs at some point, not by the local municipalities, but by Springfield?
So, there's a lot of confusion when you hear the pension crisis and you hear talk about state pensions. There's actually all different pension funds, so the IOUs that you hear about at the state level are state pensions, which don't affect Geneva's pensions.
Gotcha, okay.
So, but we experienced some of that, only in the earlier years, you saw, where we weren't contributing the actuarial amount, but we are now caught up with that.
Thank you.
Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Bruno.
Thanks, Rita. Do you know how consolidation would affect our contribution?
No, because it's all based upon which of those four that they choose.
Okay.
I've heard some worry that people are afraid that... Um, I've heard some worry that people are afraid that if you're, if, if you're high, more, if you're more, or sorry, you're highly contribu- if you have a higher percentage contribution, that you may lose that in consolidation. But that's going to have to be written in the bill that the state passes to maybe try to get, to try to not have that happen. But in IMRF's example is everyone, even though all the money is commingled, everyone has their own contribution rate. So the city of Geneva has a different contribution rate than the Park District, than the Library, than Batavia. So even though all the money is commingled, everyone still has their own separate bucket. So I would hope that that's what, that's how they would write it. So everyone would have their own separate bu- bucket, but keep all the investments together.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I'm only chiming in because I had a whole list of questions here, and you answered every one of them. So thank you for, thank for the, it's, it's a pretty information-dense presentation.
Yeah, a lot to cover.
So I'll probably go through it again, but I appreciate it, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
Uh, could you elaborate a little bit on the expert assistance? And, uh, obviously, it looks like the police and fire here locally use different, uh, resources as it relates to that. Are those, um, local experts, or are they, uh, experts provided by their various unions?
They are, the experts are actually chosen by the pension fund trustees.
Understood, yeah.
They went out to, um, I was not here, but I believe they wanted to bid for those, and they, based upon the experience, they chose whomever was the best fit for them. And that's who they have chosen.
How often do they review that? Is that on an annual basis then, or?
I do not know.
Okay.
Um, I, since I've been here, they have not reviewed that. But I do not know if there's, if we...
Well, there is a disparity between their performance. I'm just wondering how they, they, uh, they arrive at that decision and, uh, you know, your point that, uh, a larger pool like IMRF, um, there would certainly be benefits there because you'd have a bigger pool of dollars to invest, and you'd have more, more resources, probably, um, maybe more, uh, objective, uh, more experts to draw upon.
Well, I think one reason why fire's return probably is not as good is, in the past few years, I believe four or five years ago, they actually hired someone to do their, to do their investments. So their, probably their eight-year return is not as good as it should be, because you're looking at time, at a timeframe when they did not have a professional doing their investments. They were just, I don't know what they were doing before then, but, you know, they were just, they were probably maybe just doing CDs or something really basic versus actually getting in the nitty-gritty and following the statute.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais?
I have sat in on a couple of the, uh, of these, uh, these monthly meetings in the past. I'd encourage the council to sit in and, and become familiar with those pensions, those pension boards, because they, they play a pretty important role. And, uh, their poor investments, do they necessarily subject the city to greater exposure? In other words, if they're, if they're not managing those investments as well as they could, it would put the city at a greater exposure, right?
Yes. It may require a higher contribution from the city.
My eyes are scanning the audi- oh, Alderman Ruby, excuse me.
Just a quick one. Um, you said in the beginning, no POCs in the fire pension?
Yes, sorry, paid-on call. Thank you.
Do I dare ask our good friend and esteemed colleague, Mr. Anderson, the state representative, to provide any insight as to what may or may not occur in Springfield, or, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Representative, but I thought you might find this presentation in particular interesting.
It's interesting, the, the IML...
Steve, come on up, if you could, sir.
Sure.
We want to capture, and of course, a lot of people love to see you on television.
Oh, I've, I got this great picture from the trib. Good evening. Um, the, um, the IML proposals are not new, uh, and they're also very good. I think you'll find, uh, most legislators will support them. There is one hesitancy why these don't tend to move, and it has nothing to do with the logic of, of the, of the presentation, because the idea of consolidating administrative efforts, consolidating the investment of money, all makes sense. However, the pension boards also do one other thing, which is that they determine disability pensions. And the local police and fire pension boards make those determinations, in effect, because they're controlled by the union. They really like to keep that local. The danger with this, when you get to Springfield, is the people who are very pro-union on those things are afraid that will be eroded as well. That stalls these proposals out typically. So that's, that's one of the, the difficulties with it. Um, it's not a difficulty for me, but it's a difficulty with the majority party. Um, and, uh, that's why it may or may not fly. The logic, no one would disagree with down there, but, and the other thing is, we're in an election year, which means not much is going to happen in Springfield. So those would be my observations.
Is it safe to assume, besides this, everything else is fine?
Oh, yeah, it's all good.
Okay, good.
Yeah, including our pensions. We, we have five pensions. Just make sure in this process that you don't somehow get commingled with ours, because there's a lot of state reps who would like very much to touch IMRF, because it's, what, 90% funded?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and ours are like 14% funded, so, you know, just saying.
Just saying. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rita, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience, any questions or comments about the presentation made this Moving on to item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Alderman Marks?
You know, I would like to have item 11, uh, E removed, because I will recuse myself from that vote.
Any additional amendments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Motion by, was it Bruno? Seconded by Marks. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion, a second, and a vote. Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Alderman Marks. Questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item five passes with eight affirmative votes and two absent. Item number... Da-da-da-da-da, nine. Nine A. Recommend acceptance of fiscal year 2018, third-quarter goals status report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Kilburg makes the motion?
Second.
And Alderman Marks makes the second. Questions or comments regarding this report? Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes with eight affirmative votes and two absent. Item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills for payment, $2,846,039.13.
Uh, Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that are, that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Hearing none? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 10 passes with eight affirmative votes, no nay votes, and two absent. We skip down to committee of the whole, items of business. Item 11A is to recommend resolution number 2018-08, authorizing execution of Parkway Tree Inventory Contract with Graff Tree Care Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $47,970. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno? Seconded by Burkhart. Some discussion was had regarding this matter at the committee of the whole meeting. Any additional comments or new comments to be made? Alderman Swanson?
I, I just wanted to state that I think the program is a great idea. I think we need it. I, we need to update the inventory of our trees. Uh, I was against this proposal because I think we should look into other alternative measures that we could employ to get the same information that could be done at a, at a much less expensive basis. So I, I would have preferred to see alternatives, perhaps less expensive, and see what information that generates. So for that reason, I continue to be opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Anyone in the audience? Mr. Clerk, when you're available, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Nay.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
According to my roll call, Mr. Clerk, please, yes.
Exactly half voted.
So would you explain that to the council and the community watching, that in the event that...
So, the...
Microphone?
Thank you. I'm new to this, so bear with me. Um, so, in the 65 ILC S5 backslash 3.1-40-30 provides that the mayor shall not vote on any ordinance, resolution, or motion except the following, where the vote of the alderman has resulted in a tie, which is not our situation here, where one-half of the aldermen elected had voted in favor of an ordinance, resolution, or motion, even though there is no tie. So that is the situation here, so therefore, the mayor will cast the vote.
And does my vote then, uh, attribute to the total vote that I would announce?
Yes.
Okay, so I vote aye? According to the vote totals then, Mr. Clerk, I believe it's seven affirmative? Or eight?
Uh, no, uh...
Six.
Six affirmative.
Three nays.
Three nays, two absent.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, it's a good point. Had the mayor voted in the opposite, it's still, the motion still would have carried, though.
It would not.
It would not have carried.
It would not have carried, because you need a majority of all of the corporate authorities.
Okay.
And so that would include the mayor.
So we always need six, and sometimes we need more than six. But in this case, because we had five, it just worked out, and then Kevin, or the mayor, made it six, and that's why it passes. Got it, thank you.
We skip down to item 11E as an Edward, which is to approve certificate of acceptance